I'm good.
I'm good.
Yes.
I'm very excited.
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 But I will have to...
I'm glad you're here.
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 It's been a slow treat season this year.
Usually five sets of bugs before Christmas.
It was, but we didn't... I think it was the council I was like, um, I just said, "Hey, you know what? I'll bring this first council meeting because we get how much..." I came in last week and it was in my box. And I opened it up and it said, and I was like, "Okay, hey, I'll..." I thought about bringing it to the Christmas party, then I ended up running some technical helpies, so I was a little late. I showed up earlier there and helped blow up the jungle gym and I gave them all the lights and, um, and then, yeah, by the time I made it out, it was me and Ashley, so, which was good fun. We had a, we had a, yeah, it was... I don't think I've seen Millie laugh so much. It was like, and Ashley actually pulled a couple of those, uh, couple of those trivias out of her, you know, the snowman one, it was like a carrot. She's like, "No, it's a pumpkin rose." It's like, "Okay." The elf one, and, uh, yeah, it was... And I was, I'm used to doing those puzzles like, "Treat plus this is like me and you," and so I'm trying to read them, and instead it was like, you know, yeah, I was like, "I probably would've got more of those if I would've known the, you know..."
One of those things you gotta split your eyes and not look too close at it.
Well, I'm trying to put this together. I'm like, "There's no good..." But the knock shot on Thomas, I like that.
I'm throwing you in.
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 Chanel, happy new year.
Happy new year.
Happy new year.
Yeah.
Make it through another one.
Yes. Ta ta ta.
I actually got a trip coming this afternoon.
There's a flyer up here if you'd like to...
Mr. Blaster sent it last week.
Probably.
I'm here.
You should've been here a minute ago.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Happy new year, everyone.
That was our last hit up for getting everybody to do the survey. My pilot.
I didn't know I counted.
Yeah, everybody counts, right?
Yeah.
Well, that's like, it's... Um, I'm not sure what the total is now. They have to tell tomorrow. When Josh Bennett, he's out. When Josh Bennett, he's out. He's on vacation.
I'm not sure if he's...
He might call us. Relax. I'll roll. Relax. I'll roll. I hear him. I think primarily, a large part of that is due to the commercial use of it. And, uh, and the reason I came tonight is because I, uh, I just got a notice from the Forest Service that they're gonna have a sort of like a steelhead, sort of a syllabism, or they're looking for, um, basically, they're gonna talk about my proposal and get public input on it. And that's, uh, coming up here on the 21st of January, uh, from 10:00 a.m. until 12:00 p.m., so in the morning, late morning. And that's gonna be up at the Klock, uh, Votech at the, uh, Votech, uh...
Is it called now?
Generation Southeast.
Yeah, Generation Southeast, thanks. So, uh, I, what I'm looking for is support. Um, I'm asking for support for my proposal. I have a copy of my proposal here. Um, I can, um, get some copies and leave it with the council members, see if they can look at it. We'll scan it and get it out to the council. Yeah, that'd be great. And, uh, yeah, I've been all over the island looking for support. So far, I've had real good, uh, feedback on it, but, uh, yeah, thank you. Oh, thank you. You said that in the beginning, it was January 21st. Yeah, January 21st, so, yeah, 10 o'clock today. So, uh, yeah, I appreciate anybody, anybody who fishes steelhead or who's interested in it. Um, I, I think it's an important time to kind of get control of our resources here a little bit more. And, uh, and actually, the Forest Service is quite, uh, amenable to my proposal. They're taking it seriously and they're, uh, it's under discussion. I'm not sure what'll, what'll end up happening with it, but, uh, we're hoping for the best. I, I really, I don't wanna prohibit anyone from fishing steelhead on the island at all. My proposal wouldn't. Anyone can fish steelhead who wants to, local, uh, non-resident, anybody, just the commercial use of it. So it'll just, the guy that's commercial use is what we're trying to... Does that... Hey, whoever's on the phone, could you please mute your phone? All right, well, thank you. Anyway, any, any questions, um, feel, feel free to give me a call. Um, 401-401-29 is my number, and I can give you more information on it, too. Thanks. Thank you. I'll leave this here. Thank you. Appreciate it. Any more here from the public?
I was late, I'm sorry. Um, I'm Evelyn Wilburn. I put a letter in there for you folks, um, concerning the daycare center. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, concerning the daycare center building, uh, we, some friends and I are planning a spring grind, a more music entertainment event, the Spring Coffee Grind, so there'll be a couple of different themes going on. Anyways, the reason I was, wanted to speak to you all is to know if we could use the currently vacant daycare center building to sort of expand our operations into... That's the question. I don't know if you get to answer me, or if I just wait for you to think about it and tell me later.
Uh, no, later on in the agenda, we, um, discussion of the daycare, and we will, uh, just got, put that on there, on top of the list to discuss. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Any more here from the public?
Yeah, I just, I think Mary submitted a letter, I think, for me. It's probably not in your packet. Is this the appropriate place for me to just say a few words addressing?
Copy of the letter should be in the places in mind.
Yeah, my name is Cheryl Facco, and I submitted a letter to the council, uh, requesting city support for our Prince of Wales Whale Fest. Um, we've had a bit of a setback this year, a few key organizers stepped down, so right now, we're looking at like a committee of one right now. Uh, so, that would be me. Um, so, I, I'm reaching out to folks. I've been to the chamber, they weren't quite ready to take on, uh, the Whale Fest at this time. Um, I've also approached a number of folks in the city, and there's interest in, in seeing Whale Fest happen this year. And, uh, so I've spoken to Gretchen, spoken to Brian, and he mentioned that I should write a letter to the council and just, uh, ask if the city would be willing to support the Whale Fest in some capacity that I'd be willing to work out with Gretchen and Brian or whatever. I mean, I have a few ideas. It wouldn't really change much. I'm not really asking to add, um, workload to anyone. It, it's just a few things that, you know, would be nice to have some support, maybe some promotion, being able to print flyers, um, a possible venue, you know, if needed, for presenters. Uh, the framework of Whale Fest would still be the same. We usually invite a couple of, uh, presenters to speak about marine-related themes, and then we have a little storytelling poetry night at the Hill Bar. We also do some bird walks and just nature walks. So, you know, that, that would stay the same. Um, it might even be possible that it would mesh with something that's already happening at the city. I know there's some art walks, and I think Gretchen does a, um, a market or something, and that first week of April, I, I checked. And so it might be something that we could mesh with a, a marine theme or a whale theme or something and actually kind of add to the, the whole event, so. I'm just, just asking for some city support, not, not really asking for money per se, but maybe a possibility of doing some fundraising through the city, or, like I said, just some promotional materials. So, that's kind of where I am right now, and, and looking at, haven't really saved the date yet. Typically, Whale Fest, we've been doing it for 13 years about. Um, but it's usually that last week of March or the first week of April. We like to kind of plan that date around when the herring are spawning, because it's such an important cultural and, and just a active time of year. And, uh, we just would like to celebrate that, and we have. So, I haven't set the date. If the city feels like they could support it in some way, then I could work with Gretchen and, and kind of plan a date that maybe wouldn't conflict with other things going on in the city. So, that's all, all I have to say.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Learned a lot about Whale last year at Whale Fest.
Yeah.
And hiding in the glass balls and...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we want to continue all those fun things.
Yeah, it was, it was great.
Yeah, thanks.
Appreciate it. Great event, and I think it would be a big, valued city to help support it, so. Unless council has some objection to that, we'll continue to work with Cheryl.
Yep, be happy to.
Try to fill in any gaps that she has.
Cheryl, would you be opposed to maybe the city clerk advertising on the city Facebook page, asking if anyone is wanting to volunteer to contact you?
Not at all. I mean, if we want to expand the committee, that would be, that would be very helpful. Yeah, so, yeah, I appreciate that. Yeah, if there's some folks out there that wanna help out, that's great. I wonder, Mary, are there?
Would you prefer them to email you or call you or other way?
Okay.
Thank you. Good luck, Cheryl.
Yeah.
Any more here from the public?
George Trulli. So, I'm Rich Trojan. Uh, you guys are gonna be reviewing, uh, Mr. Stanley's in the audience here, too. I presume to speak for him, but I think we both are, you guys are gonna, uh, address the levels of insurance, pollution insurance that, uh, we both are facing on our leases. Um, the, uh, you've got a letter in there. I, I won't reread the letter for you. Hopefully, you've all read it and, and, uh, got a little bit of a heads up on it. Um, I guess the, uh, the, one of the questions that I didn't put in the letter was that I'm kinda curious, um, the, did the council direct staff to add pollution insurance to our leases, or is that staff's idea? In which case, is staff running the city, or are you guys running the city? Um, and, uh, in the meanwhile, uh, for my particular setup, uh, I redo my general liability insurance on March 8th, and my insurance agent has, uh, given me a quote to go to $100,000 worth of pollution insurance. Um, that's what she has gotten from her people, um, and, uh, sent on through to me. So I'm assuming that she got some kind of idea of that amount from her adjusters as far as what that level was at. Um, my negotiations with Mr. Templeton, uh, indicated that he had a discussion with my ex-insurance agent, Greg Boyd, who pulled the number of $1 million. And I don't know how much research Greg did enough to get to that number. Um, so again, I think that the $1 million worth of pollution insurance for my business is way out of line. Um, and I'm more than willing to go to $100,000, um, and make it happen. That works pretty good for me. And the last piece that I'll throw into the deal is that all of a sudden, pollution insurance has become an issue. Um, on my lease for my property where I keep my boat at, um, I became the only person in Craig that's been required to have pollution insurance. You have many boats in the harbors. Many of them maybe have pollution insurance, but you guys don't require them to have pollution insurance. The city of Craig doesn't have pollution insurance. Shortly after Mr. Tim O'Connor got out there and told me that the city doesn't need pollution insurance because they're big enough, they'll just pay for it, city employee dumped 250 gallons of waste oil in the middle of the intersection. But you're pointing your fingers at me and saying, "I gotta have it." So, um, hopefully, we can make it work to where, uh, I can put my pollution insurance, but the city has an additional insurance in place on March 8th. I've been, uh, leased my property out there for 24, 25 years, something like that. It's never been an issue. I haven't had any problems with any kind of pollution problems out there, and now, all of a sudden, we got another one. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any more here from the public? Hey! Happy new year. Happy new year. Welcome to President of the City, Craig. I'd like to talk about a couple of things. First of all, I'd like for you guys to review your, your agendas. Um, having a consent agenda passed before a public's able to speak takes the public out of the equation at meetings. Um, allowing the public to be heard before you adopt your agenda, maybe something can be happened. Tonight, I heard Ms. Facco ask for help with Whale Fest, and the administrator said, "Oh, yeah, no problem. We'll do it. City is okay with it." Last year, I asked for shared parking. Nope, you didn't get your stuff in. You oughta put it on the next meeting. So your consent agenda hurts the public when we have items that the elected officials might wanna hear and act on. These two projects Craig Drive has gone have been put on hold for upwards of 90 days of parking. And the consent agenda made me wait a whole other city council round. So I believe changing their, their, your agenda a little bit would help the public if something is needed at that meeting, like Whale Fest, like public parking. The next thing I'd, I'd like to direct this is, is to the mayor, is, Mr. Mayor, if you're gonna put an organization on the agenda, maybe you could direct your administrator to give that business a courtesy email or a courtesy call saying, "Hey, you're on the agenda tonight. I didn't know. I heard about it by a text." All right, yeah, I was, uh... We could just, you know, I mean, it's a whole world. Yeah, no, I, I did ask about it because it had been resolved, and so there's no actions on it tonight, but I get that the council was curious about it, and that's why it's on the agenda. And, uh, I see a fine new business under shared parking. That's totally been resolved with planning and zoning, but I still like to ask, um, for shared parking in the future. Doesn't mean the design, I hand it into the planning and zoning as a permanent design. I might be hooked up with the design, and we might have to come back with some shared parking. That's why that was on the agenda. Thank you. All right, thank you. I'd like to just comment on, uh, Mr. Deering's request. I, you know, I, I have, uh, similar feelings to what he has said. Our steelhead runs on the island are generally very small. Some streams are just a few dozen fish, maybe. There's a few that maybe ran a few hundred, but none of our systems are really big. And I, I become more and more concerned all the time that sometimes we don't think long in, uh, utilizing our resources sustainably on a long-term basis, and I, I think there's merit to what he's saying, and I personally am not opposed to the city writing a letter and saying, um, encouraging the Forest Service to consider the steelhead runs on a long-term basis, and they're, you know, island residents are, have first priority. Does the state of Alaska issue guide permits as well? I think on Forest Service land, it's, it's Forest Service. On Forest Service land, but, my, yeah, okay.
Um, I don't oppose with Mike at all about, um, supporting him. I'd like to read the proposal first before we, um, direct one of them to write. Just to make sure what he's saying is what he's saying.
Thank you, because normally on public comment, normally we don't make a decision. We listen to the public, and then we weigh the options, and then we move it down for discussion or get more information, but, um, yeah, um, that's, uh, yeah, perfect. No, I've been fishing steelhead for a lot of years here, so. Yeah, and I agree with Chanel. Normally, you, you wanna have something on the agenda to make decision on. Uh, in this case, it does look like, we're pretty short on notice, this meeting is gonna happen on the 21st, and our, our next meeting is the 16th, so it's, you know, giving us a little bit of time to think about how to put together a word, a letter, and I'm not saying we have to, I wouldn't suggest that we, you know, just, uh, blanket or carbon copy whatever he's suggesting, but just the idea of sustainability and residential interest first, I think there's nothing wrong with that. Yeah, no, there's, there's nothing against printing off of what he handed out, handed to the council or to take a note to look at either. Can you mail it, uh, to the council tomorrow and add it to the agenda for the 16th? Thank you. All right, thank you. All right. Any more here from the public? All right, moving on to reports from city officials. Um, just doing holidays and answering all the big questions. If anybody has any questions for me, I'm here. All right, moving on to Brian.
I submitted a written report, and would be happy to answer any questions.
I had somebody tell me, I, I think it's a bit far fetched, but it'd be nice to just clarify it. Somebody told me that the, the harbor department budget is $200,000 in the hole, and I...
Wow. The harbor department is an enterprise fund, which means that we balance the revenue from the department against the expenses, and like most of our enterprise funds, those departments are budgeted in a deficit. And so I think the harbor is budgeted at $160,000 deficit, which just means that the revenue generated by the harbor department is calculated to end up $160,000 less than the harbor operational expenses. But that doesn't mean that the department is over budget, because the budget reflects a transfer from the general fund or a transfer from other enterprise departments that end up balancing out the enterprise departments, right? So it is true that the harbor department, uh, is calculated to run at about $160,000 deficit this year, but that money is already budgeted as a transfer from the enterprise fund, or from the general fund. And the same is true of water, sewer, garbage. Um, and I don't, I think, I'm sorry, but off the top of my head, I, I don't think that the harbor is the largest deficit of the enterprise funds.
I, I understand that. I just, somebody brought that up to me, and I just wanted to make it public that it isn't 100, because the insinuation to me wasn't $160,000 or $200,000 disappeared when it's like...
No, 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 and, and it hasn't been overspent either. That would be the other, the other way to look at it is that the harbor had overspent already by $160,000, but, um, I don't think that's... Kimber keeps an eye on those budget documents and talks with departments whenever, whenever it looks like a department is on track to overspend, let alone overspending, so. I think that $160,000 is likely directly tied to the budget formation.
Okay. Thank you. Any more questions for the public?
I do. Um, I reviewed the personnel handbook, and there were a few things that I thought we should, that the council should consider, um, like the code of conduct for employees, council, or anybody representing the city of Craig. I felt that we, that everyone should be in good standing with the city, meaning nobody owes the city money or, um, you know, anything like that to be a council member, to, you know, maybe work out a payment plan if they're, and want to be an employee. Um, uh, we are gonna talk about the holidays on a different note.
Right.
Um, and what do you guys think about that?
Um, I think it sounds almost like an invasion of personal privacy to sit there and tell somebody that they can or can't run because they have a outstanding balance. Plus, our city has been doing really well with collecting outstanding bills or letting people know, and so I think that would just be extra staff work for the city clerk and stuff to have to do during voting times or an application being submitted. It's just, we are already having troubles with people participating anyways. This is just another reason for people to not. That's what I think.
So we have a couple of staff members that have been working with me to review the personnel handbook. We're going page by page and section by section. Uh, when we're done with the review, we'll bring the whole handbook to council for discussion and adopting some or all of the changes that we recommend to make. So I'm happy working with, uh, Kimber and Kelsey to look at what other municipalities do and, and propose some language, but, yeah, eventually, the council will get an opportunity to weigh in on the whole of the, uh, personnel handbook. The reason, at, at your request, that we brought the holiday scheduling is because adding or changing holidays that are in the holiday schedule is, is a policy decision, which doesn't really affect the rest of our review of the handbook.
Yeah, I just think if we're asking the public to be upstanding and pay their property tax or sales tax or their bill, you know, at the least, I feel like our council should be held at that standard also.
And ultimately, that's a policy call for the council.
We had problems with this before.
Uh, I, I don't recall any discussions about changing that particular section.
I believe that people on payment plans, and we've never made public, so it's like, just throughout the city, so it's, um, Mike, yeah, with as many people as we get running around here, it's, uh, we hate to discourage anymore not to, not to run, but...
I just, that was just one thing that I noticed, that we didn't have a code of conduct for our council.
Yeah, and, yeah, and I would like to, yeah, I'd like quickly revise that. I'd like to get the handbook out to everybody, and I'm glad you're going through it, because there's a lot of revisions that kinda need to be cleaned up, so. And then I'd like everybody to sign it, so we know that everybody's aware of the policies for, um, the, the city as well as...
I'm, I'm happy to bring some, uh, research. When we do bring the personnel handbook back to the council after we've kind of completed our review and, you know, recommended changes, um, we can bring some language, look at what other municipal is here for the code of conduct, but ultimately, it would be up to the council, just like any other change to the personnel handbook, to decide to adopt or not.
Yeah. I mean, you said it hasn't been revised in 25 years, is that...
No, it's, it's been revised, and it's, the handbook generally is kind of a living document. I mean, the council has made revisions to it as recent as the last couple of years, right? When we, generally, when we find, uh, some issue with the handbook that doesn't really match, you know, how we're doing things, or, or, um, complicated to, uh, complicated to apply, right? Um, the, the allowance of pool passes for employees and, and later on for elected officials was a change to the personnel handbook, change to the benefits section. Um, we recently changed the policy, or council adopted policy, or took out a policy, that we had, um, new employees who were in their probationary period that by the handbook standards were not allowed paid holidays. Um, but the bookkeeping for that is a nightmare to start with, and, um, and we closed the offices on those holidays. So the council ultimately decided to adopt a policy to remove that restriction, and so now all employees, regardless of probationary status, if they are employed, when a holiday comes up, they, they get treated. So it's a, so... So it's a, so the document was, the newest personnel handbook as a whole was adopted in 2010 by the city council. But there have probably been 10 or 12 or 15, you know, changes to the handbook that the council has made individually. What we're doing now is just going through the whole document.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions for? Moving on to Kimber.
I submitted, oh.
I'm sorry, moving on to Mary.
I was ready. Submit a report. Can't take questions if you have any.
I'm sorry, moving on to Kimber. I want to have my glasses tonight.
Anybody have any questions?
Congratulations on passing your mark classes.
Thank you.
That's exciting.
Appreciate it. I'm checking on.
Very exciting. I don't want everyone to get me like that. I will say two things about permanent capital management. Number one, if you look at the report, they're doing a great job for us. Number two, I was contacted by Blake earlier this week, who just wanted to give me a heads up that the company has sold. The prior owner is looking to retire, so he sold permanent capital management. But right now, the prior owner wanted to make sure that it was an Alaskan company that bought it and was managed similarly or the same way. So I don't expect to see any changes in company name or policies. We'll still be dealing with the same investment folks that we're dealing with now. But if you hear something in the news or whatever about permanent capital management being bought out, that's true, but I don't expect that it will impact our accounts with them.
Do you have a name of the buyer or who it is?
I don't remember it. I think Blake told me who it was, but I don't remember the name of the company that they bought it out.
So in practical sense, and we would, at our next report next year, we would see a different company in the same name.
Blake said they're keeping the Alaska Permanent Capital Management name for those accounts that APCM, or those activities that APCM continues to do. And we wouldn't have the same staff, we could have seen our accounts. If I hadn't said anything, you don't see it in the news, you probably would not have known that it was a different company next year.
I just got weird. I think Ivy might know the name.
It's called Blue Umbrella LLC.
Blue Umbrella LLC. Thank you, Ivy.
And to follow up from the clerk's report, is everybody available for the January 16th meeting?
Mike won't be.
Mike won't be. Anyone else going to be gone for that meeting? Okay, cool, thank you.
Okay, no more questions. Moving on to Mary.
There you go.
Yeah, all right, thank you, Mary. Put due checks marked by the administrator and the administrator. City planner.
Hi, it's another report. Yeah, I am available for questions, but I would like to focus on one part of it where I put in the last agenda item, a discussion on the moratorium for leases in Leafield. I'd like to see a discussion of that coming into this year because we're still kind of in the middle of Title 16 review. So I don't know if you guys would like to talk about that or not, but I know the moratorium was supposed to be ending December 31st, 2024, and it seems a little unjustified to have it step back up when we're in the middle of revising Title 16, which is municipal own land.
We did have one of the folks who submitted a letter to the council when they're intent to apply for a lease come in yesterday and drop her lease off, or not yesterday, I guess it was today, this morning, drop her lease application off. So there are leases on the table, but it definitely would be helpful to get some general direction on what the council would like to do. It has to be by resolution, so we wouldn't be able to take action until the next council meeting. But I guess Ivy and I are curious if the council would like us to prepare such a resolution to extend the moratorium or just continue on.
We had a lot of, a lot of discussion of Title 16 and what could, but yeah, whatever council would like to do. I know that the leases come to us one at a time, right? So, I mean, we can, I think we still move forward with praying the leases and then making a decision on an individual basis until something changes.
Yeah, I don't think there's a wrong answer here. I mean, it's, it's helpful for us to know whether or not to process these lease applications.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. I think we still, probably as council would like to continue processing the leases and then on, you know, base by base, then we can approve or deny whichever leases have come across. Thank you. All right, any more questions for?
Are we going to discuss the pollution insurance? I feel like this has been on the agenda several times.
Yeah, this is on the agenda.
Oh, for the, okay.
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, because it's an amendment to a lease and so...
It was mentioned, I had to get in contact with Island News, or Island Post, and for meeting the posting requirements in Title 16, I did need to kind of push it a little bit back, but I wanted to give you guys forewarning so you know when that is coming up to you.
And a general policy discussion, which is on the agenda, will be helpful. We have an actual request to amend Mr. Stanley's lease in relation to the pollution insurance requirement. And we're kind of waiting on that policy call to finish the negotiations with Mr. Trojan, since the two are, the answer is inextricably linked to both leases. So there is an agenda item under new business tonight for discussion by the council and some policy direction, which will help us formulate the language for the amendment.
All right. Thank you, Ivy. Moving on to Vanessa. Vanessa, are you on the phone?
I submitted a written report. Yes, I am. I submitted a written report and we have to answer any questions.
Last couple of weeks, it's like you, it's been busy, feeling a lot of vehicles getting pulled out of the ditch here on the way to work.
Yes, it has been busy.
All right, not hearing any questions. Thanks for your services. Moving on to Hans.
Mr. Mayor, I did not submit a report. I was off the week that the reports were due. Like to report to the council that I have hired a new assistant harbor master. So excited to, he came on board Monday. Excited to have him pull through now. We are working on a rate study, looking at all of the southeast Alaska harbors that are bigger or smaller than us, looking at some of their policies. Monday, we fired the ice house back up and make it's more ice, the patrol fleet's out working and everything's working good there so far. We have some guys that are going to be participating in a shrimp season here mid-month, so we'll be, we'll be making more ice for them as well. And then our haul-out trailer is, we should be just about completed with that project tomorrow. So we've had one boat that really wants to get hauled out, but otherwise everyone else has been pretty patient, so. Anyway, I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Questions for Hans? All right, thank you, Hans. Then we have the chief.
I did send a report. I did drop an updated one off earlier today before the council opened up for a session. Just kind of the end of the year numbers. Some of the numbers are up, some of them are down, some of them are kind of just staying right in the middle, you know, kind of consistent. A lot of that has to do with like COAT numbers going down because the troopers maintained COAT for a little bit, COAT had to rebuild its apartment, then they lost an officer. Some of our numbers, I think, increased because we were fully staffed until we lost one officer to go to the academy and that shorted us. So you're going to get a little bit of a roller coaster between people on off-island training. But at the end of the month, we get Officer Parsons back. I think he's set to graduate the 31st of this month and then he'll be returning. Officer Matt Stridlin will leave before Officer Parsons gets back, so there will be a timeframe where there'll just be three of us for about a week to 10 days, where one is traveling to the sector, the other one's coming back from Fairbanks. Once he gets back to Fairbanks, he'll do one to three weeks of FTO before he gets either signed off or let go, one of the two. You either make it or you don't. Other than that, other, I mean, some issues with the jail, some sewer issues, I think Oliver took care of that this evening, but the building is definitely old, but we make it work. And the heating system, I mean, towards the end of the agenda, there's some, hopefully money allocated to get that fixed. But overall, staying busy. Still, still down one part-time fill-in dispatcher. The people that have applied for it, unfortunately, are disqualified either by convictions or certain drug usage, because you have to get certified through two different entities in order to work inside the dispatch center. Not that you have to be squeaky clean, I don't think anybody's squeaky clean, but just there's some things that just I can't get around, no matter what I do, so. You happy to answer any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I want to thank RJ. RJ does an excellent job rotating their vehicles out. Almost every vehicle that he buys for the PD or for other departments are through other agency surplus sales, whether it's floor service or other police departments. And we've seen his report that he spent $10,000.
$10,300.
$10,300 for a new truck for the PD, which is a great price for the truck, but also passed on the old PD truck to the public works shop and filled a need that they had, saved a lot of money that we had allocated for the public works department to buy new trucks as well. RJ's effort to identify the surplus vehicles and get through that process, it's really helpful, both operationally and definitely budget-wise.
Yeah, I mean, just the equipment alone runs about $6,000. If you were to go out and buy one of these vehicles and then outfit it to make it a police vehicle, about $6,000. And the one truck that I got, I mean, it drives nice, I mean, it's in great condition. Next week, I should be finalizing the bid process for the other one for Public Works, another 2018 Dodge 1500 series. They're good work trucks, and they're right here on the island too, so I mean, I don't have to worry about barging or ferrying.
Thank you. Public Works guys pull people over whenever they want, I like it.
They take the light bar off. Take all the good stuff out of there.
Oh, okay.
We've not lost complaints when we pull people's houses.
Yeah, right? Nobody's home every time I go to their door. It's weird. You are, dear.
On that note, we'll move on to Oliver, Public Works. I submitted a written report and happy to answer any questions. Okay, parks and public facilities. Submitted a written report, happy to answer any questions.
All right.
All three lights shipped from Illinois, so they're on their way here, so the next weekend after we could have 35 new street lights put up. Probably the only new, and then thanks again, RJ, he's prepared a couple of cars for himself, handed down cars to us that we've reworked, and he picked up a pretty nice new truck that we're going to give to the sewer plant operator. He's been rocking the same truck since 2002. Lights don't work, the dash doesn't work, you know, because we run them until they pretty much die, and so that's been a big one.
That's the one truck, no B steel.
Not just because it's old either.
Yeah, knowing that, I guess it'd probably be a good idea to start making a list of the 35 lights, may want to start changing out and getting the full numbers on them and, good question, the APNT, I'm sure it'll probably take them a couple of weeks to get on it.
I talked to Mitch Bickler this morning.
Yeah. Yes, perfect. I might, hopefully, yeah, hopefully he put in a request to go through the office in Craig to do a, yeah, a work order, so, perfect. Awesome, thank you, Oliver. Moving on to recreation.
Hi, this is Gretchen, I'm on the phone. If you guys have any questions for me about my report, I also just want to give a big shout out to everybody who has helped with all the holiday lights around town and helped me take them down, and APNT for putting them up, and the Craig Tribal Association who did a shuttle for our Christmas light festivities at houses. So if anyone has any questions for me, and again, I'm a big supporter of whatever happens with the daycare, I'm happy to help with that, I'm happy to help with the whale fest, and I'm also happy to help with the coffee grind. So again, thanks for everybody who's been doing a phenomenal job this year helping. There's been a ton of volunteers, so thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Gretchen. Mike?
Yeah, just thank you for the, all the lights and the work for you and everybody. You know, I did hear numerous comments about it, and I think that the, you know, the brightness of all our lights this year added to kind of the festivity spirit here this year seemed to be pretty noticeable, so good job.
You know, I know that there's a discussion on lights in the future, and I've seen your letter with the new lights being proposed. Might, you know, maybe have a letter of support from the council to APNT, just to show that it is important to the city for these lights to keep going up, and so that, you know, it is a huge community, you know, appreciation, because they do spend time putting them up and down, but in order to buy more lights, we got to have some kind of agreement that we're going to build them up next year and the year after that and the year after that. So I just might think about that. Any questions for Gretchen?
I do have, Mr. Mayor, I do have a question in regards, you know, the pool's been shut down for what a week? Did they figure out what is going on? Is it going to be an easy fix or is it going to be?
I can help with that. There's two, we have it down to two parts, they're both really expensive, and so atomic electric was off the island on holiday and returned today. They went out and did an evaluation of those two parts, and it might be as simple as some corroded wire connections in, it's a pretty humid area in the pool. We're going to know that tomorrow, and if it's not, we'll know which part it is and we'll order it. Those parts are at least a week out, once we work. They're expensive enough that we can't just order them, just in case.
Okay, thank you.
Somebody informed me that they can't start their New Year's resolution until the pool's gone, yeah, so.
It's what the ocean's for.
Pouring wine. All right, thank you, Gretchen. Moving on to Stephanie, library. Stephanie, are you on the phone?
Be happy to try and answer any questions from Stephanie's report. She did submit a written report.
All right. Thank you, staff. Appreciate it, and happy new year. Moving on to reading of correspondence. Solvent secures wins for Alaska major water infrastructure bill.
So just so the council knows, not in the press release, but this is the same bill that contains the instructions to the Corps of Engineers to fully fund the general reevaluation study for the Craig Small Boat Harbor.
That's including a new, if you decide to do a new site, it doesn't have to be on the same site. It's including a new site as well. So I'm sure that one will have a lot of discussion in the future as the bill goes through Congress and see what it does.
Well, the bill's already passed through Congress, both houses. It just has to go to the president for signature.
Okay, all right. I'll see if there's a sign. All right, perfect. Any questions on the bill? Okay, moving in on consideration of resolutions and ordinances. Resolution 25-01, resolution in memory of Tim O'Connor.
Resolution 25-01 has been.
Second.
Open for discussion.
Questions?
Roll call though.
Questions?
No.
Resolution. Yes. Janice Turgen?
Yeah.
Sean Thomas?
Yes.
Michael Kevich?
Yes.
Sean Kevich?
Yes.
Liz Miller?
Yes.
All yeses and passes. Thank you. Order number 784 fiscal year 2024 supplemental operating budget.
Second.
Open for discussion.
I'd just like to comment, we're, again, we're really fortunate. So many of our income line items are significantly higher than we anticipate. Because the combination of continued to, you know, we continue to have the, you know, relatively strong economy and also I think it also is, you know, fiscally prudent.
A hell of an egg, $1.00 a carton now. Sorry.
I didn't want to say that.
I know. I just, for a day, if somebody said, yeah, it's a dollar an egg. I'm like, oh, my goodness. They said the goose that laid the golden egg must have been in Craig. So, or POW anyways. Okay, here, go discussion. Roll call though.
Janice Turgen?
Yes.
Sean Thomas?
Yes.
Michael Kevich?
Yes.
Sean Kevich?
Yes.
Liz Miller?
Yes.
All yeses and passes. Thank you. Order number 784 fiscal year 2024 passes. Moving on to new business. CTA requests for shared parking on Canary Point.
So there's a memo in the packet. There's, I'm not really looking for any action from the council tonight. The CTA submitted and amended plan to the planning commission that included 33 parking spaces. And Mr. Cook was here for that meeting and had a discussion with the planning commission about busing for large events and some other ways to handle parking needs. And the planning commission approved the rezoning request. In fact, the first reading of that ordinance was on the consent agenda tonight. So the planning commission has approved the parking plan. So at this point, at least related to the rezoning request, there's no more action required from the council.
Good way to resolve it or, you know, work together.
Moving on to lease termination and discussion on daycare building.
So again, Mr. Mayor, I'm not looking for formal action on this. The lease termination is kind of a really pro forma administrative process. And under the terms of the lease, either party can cancel the lease with 30 days' notice. So Vanessa has submitted this, the letter that's attached, terminating the lease as of January 13th, which would meet the 30-day lease termination requirement, and has proposed repaying the entire amount of both the grant and loan that were made to Island Daycare over the next six months. So we'll work through that process. But effectively, Vanessa, as of January 13th, will no longer be the leaseholder. What I am looking for from the council is, this does open some policy decisions by the council. For the last 35 years or more, the city has facilitated a daycare, never run one, but has facilitated a daycare. So there are some options with the termination of this lease, and I'm looking for council direction. One option would be to continue to facilitate a daycare. And the city would then put out some requests for proposals like we did before, for some operator who would be willing to or want to run a daycare. But there are some other options. You know, one of the options that Gretchen has mentioned and, you know, would play into Evelyn Wilburn's request about using the facility for a recreation purpose in March, would be if the council wanted to consider remodeling the building and using it as a recreation center, kind of as an extension for the gym. And there's some, I think there's some merit to that proposal if the council sets the policy that it wants to get out of the daycare building business. And generally speaking, the council also has the option to propose some other use or propose putting the building out, advertising for a lease based on some other use or set of uses. But before we do anything, I'm really looking for how the council would prefer that we proceed. And then, of course, we'll bring back whatever action items that we need to based on that direction.
Would Gretchen be using that facility for the after-school program instead of the youth center?
I think generally speaking, the intent would be to use that facility as the recreation center. And then, like Domino's, we would then figure out what to do with the existing youth center. And I've got some thoughts that we could talk about if the council wants to go that direction.
I think that's a great idea. The idea of seeing the little kids walk from the youth center down to the city gym and crossing the street is concerning to me.
Yeah.
With it right next door, I think it would be a lot less.
And there are some other advantages. There's often activities where the kitchen is related to some activity in the gym, for example. I know that at the Last Bazaar, if you didn't make it through the gym in the Last Bazaar, I think Gretchen had 55 or 60 vendors squeezed into that gym. She was still adding tables the morning of wherever she could fit them. And it would be, you know, she mentioned it would be nice for those large events to be able to expand, especially since the buildings are connected. It would keep the facilities co-located, the recreation center and the gym, which would prevent, you know, having to walk the kids up and down the hill every day for after-school. So there would be some benefits. I think that, you know, again, if the council is not inclined to put it back out for proposals to operate a daycare center, I think that moving the recreation center down there has a lot of benefits.
I'm just not speaking, I'm not speaking for the council here, but I think using that for something else is a great idea. I also know that not only us, but across the state of Alaska, one of our biggest priorities is a daycare.
Yes.
And we scream at the state all, every year until we get a daycare facilitated, which is maybe coming here soon. It might be beneficial to at least advertise and see if somebody, and maybe not even start a lease until they can show that they can be, come up with the criteria to actually apply for it. But just, I mean, we've been screaming daycare for a year since I've been here. And if, and not, I mean, still use the facility like we're talking about. But if there is somebody who's qualified out there that we don't know has haven't put an application in, maybe advertise once from C and then we can still move forward with using the facility, but.
And that is the conundrum. It isn't, the daycare isn't neat.
Yeah.
That building is the only building that we have that could facilitate a daycare center. The existing youth center would not be able to facilitate a full daycare center. And so it really comes down to a policy call by the council, right, of what direction you want staff to proceed on using the building.
I agree with you that we do need a daycare center around here. But I do also see that a lot of families have been moving away or our school population has been getting smaller. So that need for the daycare center being as large as it is, isn't quite there anymore. And I think a lot of people around here prefer, because it's so small, that they would just prefer to keep a couple of kids here and there instead of trying to operate such a big staff and get all the insurance and everything else that goes along with running a daycare.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we are approaching budget time, and it really gives me a headache. For all the years, I mean, it was even before I came on in 1990, that daycare has been a pain. You know, I don't know how much money we sunk into it recently, and now we're going to, you know, how much is a remodel going to cost?
Yeah, that's, was the only reason to bring it out like right now.
Where is the money going to come from? I think it's a great idea, but we need to be realistic. Because there are, there are things that are on the wish list from departments that have been on there for a long, long time. And a lot of them are, this year are going to be a must, period. So we need to consider what a remodel is going to cost also.
I see your point, Melie. We do have all those little toilets that we just bought that took forever to get here. But because it's an extent, almost like Gretchen could use it as an extension. And I know they've done a lot of work in there. And the daycare has nice sectioned areas that I feel like Gretchen could probably work with it almost as is than having to do a big remodel at first, just so that building is being used and not just sitting there and deteriorating more.
We passed Oliver, and Oliver's been working on putting a budget together after we've done a couple of walkthroughs of what it would take to put the building in a kind of a turnkey status, right? And we have put money into the building, including the tiny toilets that took so long to get. I think, I think the council's authorized $20,000 or $30,000 over the past year to new windows, new flooring, replacing industrial appliances in the kitchen, working on kitchen flooring. It still needs, if you want to go through the building and see, I'm happy to take you or Oliver or Justin can. It still needs paint. It's got ratty cabinets that have broken doors. And, I mean, so there's still a fair amount of work to do to kind of bring it to usable status. But again, if that's the council's direction during the budget process, we'll, we'll take Oliver and Justin's budget and try and figure out how to include that in the budget.
Even if we went with the direction of putting it out for bid as well, we would still have to fix up the building because it...
Again, that would be a policy called by the council. There's a lot of work that needs to be done. Generally speaking, the lease of the building has required the operator to take care of basically everything inside the walls. And the city has been responsible for the building envelope, right? So, so things like occasionally replacing flooring probably should fall to us. Windows, which we just replaced, does fall to us. Some of the structural stuff like the kitchen floor definitely fall to us. Whether we find an operator and we offer to upgrade cabinets and shelves is our decision. We can also find an operator, if there's one out there, that's willing to make that investment since it's interior of the building. So I'm hearing some mixed directions. So let me propose something, right? How about if we, how about if staff writes a request for proposals for an operator and puts it out for a couple of months to see if we have interested parties? And then if not, we can revisit the discussion about some other use or extending our...
And tell him we can utilize the building as is.
Yeah, after January...
We have to heat it, you know, I mean, it's... Yeah, yeah. I mean, we've been...
Basically being utilized.
Yeah, we tell me not seeing that being utilized. It's just, I know that across the state, we've been screaming, you know, daycare, daycare, daycare. So.
I don't think Vanessa would have an objection to the city using the building before January 13th. But after January 13th, there is no leaseholder. And so we have complete control over the building. So certainly between now and either some decision about a future use or, or, you know, I've been thinking hard about how to structure an RFP and a lease that would build in more milestones than we have in the past. If we even get anyone interested, right? But if somebody does apply, does respond with a, with whatever we ask for, then we would need to move down the path of entering into a lease agreement, at which point, the rights that we normally would have in the building would be whatever we negotiate with the leaseholder.
Yeah, I know. It'd be nice to be able to see the person who's bringing in the lease that they are qualified to meet the guidelines without the building being operated. Clint, when are you guys looking at the early center being prepared?
We are, once again, our process is put on hold because of six parking slots.
Yeah. And now it's gone.
By the administrator. But it's back on. I think you had an operator.
I'm very lucky. Yeah, so.
We've resolved that remedy with adding parking to the senior center. And we are negotiating with Clint and I around the starting process of the groundwork. So it's still in the process. And if the city pursues a daycare, then we'll back out and use our land otherwise.
Oh, no. So if we opened up a daycare, you guys wouldn't want to put in a daycare?
Well, it's more, more, more of our early childhood learning time, but daycare was involved.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think, I think there's a place for both of them to join together. But I was just seeing if we're going to have a two-year gap with, you know, one being built. If there was something that, you know, we've been, you know, opening up, not looking at competing with the CTA, just looking that way.
I think the opening was spring 26.
It was spring 26. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
This is Gretchen, Mayor. Is it, is it okay if I speak?
Yes, go ahead, Gretchen.
Hey, and I don't want to prolong this. But anyway, so I've been hearing all your comments, and I think they're really good. And I, you know, again, I know we don't need a daycare on the island. But I also do want to say, I really appreciate some of the council members being concerned about the kids going up and down the street from the youth center down to the gym. We do have a lot of kids with high energy. And so what we're really finding is a lot of them do not want to be doing crafting. And so I've been really trying to re, you know, like re-chisel this program so that there is more activity at the gym. And so I think really, if we didn't use the daycare, it would also allow us to put the kids with high energy into the gym. And we have eyes on them. But then we also have rooms for the kids who need quiet time. And I think we're starting to miss some of the kids who need quiet time because there's too much noise in the youth center. I think that the youth center is getting a lot of usage from magic and knitting group and different groups. So I think that actually could be a really good art boutique area. And I know there's been talk over the years to have like an art place where people could come and do art and, you know, and share their art. So I mean, again, I'm just speaking from myself and what I've been seeing happening. But I think, you know, as we move forward, there's an opportunity to kind of blend those two facilities together, you know, and have cooking classes and have other things happening there and have these choir rooms. I think we're actually going to get a lot more participants and keep them a lot safer. Not that they're not safe at this point, but I just think there is kind of a little bit of a concern and have other things happening there and have these choir rooms. I think we're actually gonna get a lot more participants and keep them a lot safer. Not that they're not safe at this point, but I just think there is kind of a little bit of a concern of running up and down the street. And I think that the youth center still has a lot of potential for community use. So again, thanks for letting me come in and speak related to this and that's about all I have to say.
No, thank you Gretchen.
Mayor, on, on another note, I have a question in regards to the city gym. Why is that door left cracked open this time of year? I thought froze to death there the other night. I mean, that's not healthy if we have kids in there. Granted, they're running around. And I mean, I feel like it's wasted heat. They have the heat on, but you can't feel it because that door is cracked open. Makes no sense to me at all.
There may have been a rock in front of the door that night.
That, that was my fault. I opened the door and didn't realize it was not gonna close right behind me. Sorry. That was totally my fault.
I mean, it seems like every functioning, it's that way.
Yeah.
Not just that one occasion.
I have a question in regards to that. So does that door work well? If you unlock the door, is it easy to?
That's what I was wondering, if, that's why, because there's usually a rock or something there kind of impeding it. So I didn't know if it lock, if it stayed locked or if the door is functional.
It, it's a push bar and it has, somebody has to get the hex key and lock the push bar down in order to keep it unlocked. Otherwise it automatically locks every time it closes.
So is there a hex key?
Yeah, it's connected right to the door.
Okay.
Yeah, I unlock it all the time when I rent it for kids' birthdays and stuff.
So maybe just signage.
Discipline or signage.
Yeah, put a sign on the door.
Yeah.
Please, uh, keep the door closed. It's cold outside and here's a hex key. Yeah, 'cause I wouldn't have known that if I didn't, you know, um, yeah.
So back to the daycare discussion. Is there any council members that object to that proposed solution that we put out for some period of time, a request for proposals? And if we don't get anyone qualified or interested, then we can come back and revisit the discussion about, um, using it for recreational or some sort of services? Okay, not seeing any objections from the council, that's what we'll, and, yeah.
Uh, while we're speaking about daycare and Evelyn putting a request possibly use it for their event, their coffee ground.
This would really depend on the results of some other process, right? So if we get somebody who is qualified and ready to move forward and we approve a lease in February, then that's not possible. If, if we still have complete control of the building in March, I think that would be a great use, but.
Yeah.
But it's hard to commit now to a decision about the use of the building until we kinda see how the rest of this.
I know we haven't had any luck in the last few years to get anybody around a daycare, that's why. That, that, that's why, well, Mayor, I put it out and requested as a favor to do it. So it's not, I'm not looking at, uh, spending a lot of time on this of like, you know, but just, I know that every conference I go to, they like, what's one of the biggest things to your community? And I'm like, daycare! And so it was just throwing it out there. But, um, I'm totally excited to see it be used for something. Yeah. Because it's definitely just a cost, no matter if somebody's in it or not, so.
So may I ask a question? I'm sorry, is that so I could use it unless somebody comes along?
Yes, right now we are, it sounds like the council wants to utilize it for other things if, uh, we don't have anybody. And I'd be really surprised if somebody would be ready and willing to go with an application by, by that point in time. But, and we may only advertise for a couple of weeks and then be on with it if it can afford for it to be tied up for another year, so.
And even if we advertise and somebody's interested, you guys know that the lease process is not.
Yeah.
Super quick. And so it's likely that approval of negotiations of a lease would take two months all by itself.
Yeah.
So I think it likely that we'll still be in possession of the building in March when Evelyn has asked for this event there. And I, I think it would be a good use of the building.
Have me a comment.
I just, the, the only caveat is if somebody pops right up, is well qualified and we get a lease done quickly, it really is up to the leaseholder whether or not to allow other uses.
It is a new year, Brian.
It is a new year.
Can we direct staff to do the walkthrough and see what needs to be done now? I mean, like, I don't see why we need to prolong that.
We've already, we've already done that.
And we have a budget?
Oliver's working on the budget along with Justin.
I was, that's what I'm asking, can we have that? Is it feasible to have it by the next council meeting?
No problem. Okay.
Thank you, Oliver.
All right, more discussion on the daycare.
All right, thank you, council.
Thank you, council. Moving on, pollution requirements for lease of city property.
Again, I really don't need formal action from the council on this one tonight so much as some policy.
You are the last party in the conference.
So, uh, council, especially council members have been around for a while and may be aware that pollution insurance was brought up by council members several years ago. And we, we have tried to apply that based on the best information we had from that time. To new industrial type leases, which, um, we signed a lease about a year ago with, uh, Mr. Stanley, uh, for, um, property out at the industrial park. And that's the first lease, uh, that this, the full application of the emergency pollution insurance was included in. And the dollar value again was based on a discussion with the, with the insurance, uh, provider. When the council had the discussion about including it, that's where the million dollars comes from. But, uh, both, Mr., so Mr. Stanley has formally requested an amendment to his lease to reduce that requirement to a hundred thousand dollars of coverage. And, uh, we'll see the, um, ordinance related to that lease amendment at the next couple of meetings, like Ivy said. Publishing timing and public notice and stuff doesn't really allow for it to be, uh, first reading to be considered tonight, so we'll see that over the next couple of meetings. But in the meantime, related to that and related to finishing lease negotiations with Mr. Trojan, I'm really looking for some clear guidance from the council, what the council would like to see in them, right? And so, um, again, this, uh, this pollution insurance is intended to cover cleanup remediation of a site if there is a petroleum or hazardous materials spill. And it's really completely up to the council, what level insurance the council wants to require and, or if any. So I'm open to any questions that I can try to answer and can ask for the council to give us some direction. We don't need a formal, uh, decision on the direction. Just knowing what the council's chosen policy is would allow us to, um, work through the lease amendment process from Mr. Stanley and to finish leasing Mr. Trojan. And we would apply the same policy to any other similar leases that get remedied.
I haven't, uh, met with Mr. Stanley, walked through his facility, um, knowing that his lease was coming up on a million dollars. And Trojan's lot is right next to our site for APNT and, um, happened to hop, skip, jump around there one day and, um, I mean, for what they have going on as a small business, me, I, I'm happy with a hundred thousand dollars, um, insurance. Um, I don't know if we can add, um, verbiage into a lease agreement as saying that you were responsible for any contamination, you know, until it's remediated. Um, and that would, um, make them responsible for the remediation of any contaminated material if they walk away from it. Um, their name's still on it, but, um, it's, they're, Craig, his, all the field that's in those boats are in, same boats that are in the harbor that come up on land. Everything's contained. Richard's stuff is all in tanks and vehicles and stuff like that. So just, uh, not with the council. Just, uh, I, I, I walked through there personally and I deal with hundreds of thousands of gallons of fuel. And Cecil said it's certified and I didn't see a big need. I don't wanna hinder businesses. Five thousand dollars a year for a business could be a pretty big thing if you're, um, you know, especially providing services in this community. So that's all I have to say.
I think we should have a formal process for assessing, I guess, what business, like how much insurance they need or if it's just gonna, I think we need a policy on, you know, the minimum amount and that it's fair for everybody 'cause it doesn't seem like we should be targeting one person needs a million dollars and one person doesn't need any. I feel that it should be fair to everybody.
If I may, um, interject on that. Speaking with the insurance providers, the insurance providers have two options. The hundred thousand dollar emergency response or the million dollar emergency response.
Okay.
Both of which are emergency response coverages.
The, um, the provider, which companies utilize the, the million dollars? She goes, well, Petro. You know, not the small mechanics and stuff like that. This is for the big ships, the commercial ships and the big, uh, your gas stations have million dollar policies, you know, um, where things are in the thousands of gallons and they need to get response out. And it's an insurance policy that says, yes, there's, there's a quick response to that in that environment. Well, you know, the other companies are right on the water. That's very, they need a quick response. For us, we have, uh, different forms of containment. We have plastic barrier containments and, you know, we have diapers and, uh, you know, there's just, there's such a small amount that's gonna hit anything and, and, you know, preventive maintenance is always the best thing, you know, to prevent things and be, you know, thoughtful about it. But there's, there's no options.
Okay.
In the swing of insurance that we've discussed. And then that provider is just the local catch and can't provide. They go through the state and there's no one else to even. When I asked for pollution insurance, she was, she, it took her three weeks just to find somebody. So, yeah, it was, it wasn't easy and it's a new thing. And so it's all new to everybody, I'm assuming. But that's, that's the information I gathered from her and thank you for the information.
Yeah, no, that's great to know. I think one hundred thousand dollars coverage seems to be reasonable.
And I would, I would, uh, kind of caveat your, your earlier suggestion, Sean. We don't have anybody qualified, we don't have any staff member qualified to do that kind of assessment and make a decision. So we would, you know, now, now we're adding the cost to hire someone specifically for each lease, which would then be passed on to the leaseholder. They probably, they probably may as well pay for the million dollars by the time they pay for someone from C Pro or someone to come over and.
And also if you have containment units like DEC, EPA, everybody else is gonna get involved. If you have fuel containments that are big, you should have an SPCC already in place. That's where, um, your fire, fire marshal permits and everything else comes from. So neither one of these guys had thousands of gallons of fuel tanks around. Everything they had was in containment, um, and they were small volumes. I know fifty-five gallon rounds, if you started your SPCC from right there, but, um, seeing a million dollars worth, if I was next to the ocean and, which, we are a member of C Pro. And they are your insurance. You could, we have everything right and they can come in and say, you didn't have this boom and you have C Pro. They're like, we are your insurance if the oil or gas or diesel hits the water. They are basically, um, they're your first response and they have first responders. They're the company to look into, anybody doing the work around the.
So just, uh, just for clarification of the city and the harbor, it's covered by the C Pro?
No, not the city.
Okay. About the apartment, yeah.
No, AP, I'm sorry, not, you know, APNT, we are covered by C Pro.
Okay.
Um, because we do have marine vessels and if that marine vessel did sink and all of a sudden we did have five hundred thousand feet of boom on the back of its container, um, we pull out our C Pro card and we're like, hey, we got our first responders right here. And they're like, da-da-da! And they show up and they take care of everything for you. But, um, uh, for a thousand dollars, DEC, EPA, they're the ones who's gonna regulate this. If, um, if we're making small businesses start on doing this today, then we need to start looking at every business in the community and seeing that they're doing all of their regulatory stuff correctly. I mean, it, we don't have the staff for that, so, um, like we said, so I.
And I'm, you know, I'm more than happy to carry a hundred thousand dollars emergency response. If I have a school that requires it, I need that emergency response. So I'm more than happy. And my, my cost out of pocket on an annual basis is less than three hundred for that. So I'm very grateful for that. So it's, it's, it's definitely bonus for me. I don't mind a hundred thousand dollars.
And like Sean mentioned, I think that'd be a great policy for any type of, you know, facility that's using, you know, you know, gas, diesel, anything like that to make sure they are carrying a hundred thousand dollar, you know, insurance. It's, uh, two hundred dollars a year or something, that's.
It's less than three hundred.
Yep, I mean, and it covers them. Because when you get with DEC, just to clean up alone and the planning alone and, and paying somebody to come in here and take samples and so on and so forth. You gotta send it off to catch a can, um, it's gonna at least buy you some time. In this case, since we're looking for policy direction from the council, pollution, would it be helpful?
I would move that we, uh, I would say it's just a council, uh, directs, directs the negotiator through the negotiation for a hundred thousand dollar coverage for leases for Mr. Stanley and for Mr. Trojan.
Any more discussion? Hold on, hold on. This voice call, this, this voice call, please. Oliver, the favor?
Hi.
Okay, we will apply the level of one year thousand dollars for uses that appear to require some pollution insurance.
Moving on to city employee paid holiday policy.
This member has, uh, taken on a request in the last council meeting with the vice of council, uh, with the issue at hand, this discussion. So just a reminder, uh, the paid holidays for employees are contained in the personnel handbook, employee handbook. And employee handbook policies are set by resolution by the council. So any change to paid holidays for employees should be included in a resolution of the council for consideration. But whether it's adding, replacing, deleting, um, holidays for summer all employees, uh, that's, that's purely a policy call by the council. So what I'm looking for is if the council wants to change, uh, the paid holiday policy for employees, looking for some direction so we can bring a resolution back to the council.
I contacted several, um, different cities that would answer. Petersburg, uh, trying to get a count of what holidays they take off. In addition to our ten, Petersburg takes Martin Luther King Junior Day off, Juneteenth off, Veterans Day off, half a day on Christmas Eve and Seward's Day. I mean, they have five extra holidays. Wrangle.
Or the years.
I know.
I know, right?
Wrangle had three, you know, Gagway had three. I don't know, I, I just looked at our list. We have ten paid holidays. It's the name Craig and.
And we do have some informal, right? I normally take the, have all the offices closed and pick staff out at the end of Christmas Eve.
Yeah.
But yes, ten listed paid holidays. I wouldn't mind seeing Christmas Eve embedded in the personnel handbook, right? And I'm looking to have another discussion of other holidays.
Um, I, at the very least, I would like to see Veterans Day. Not only do we have staff, council members, employees that are veterans, I think we need to honor them and all the staff with it. Um, Martin Luther King Junior Day is a national holiday, if that's not on the list. And Christmas Eve, not your direction, I think, at the very minimum, those would be high recommendations.
Quiet, council. Is there an objection to me bringing a resolution back and then the holiday policy to include the two and a half additional holidays for city staff?
I find it, I don't know, Martin Luther King Junior Day should be on that just because, right now, because I'm not at the community, what month it is, but I feel like it'd be like a random day where someone like would walk up to the city and be like, what?
January seventeenth.
Oh, thank you.
It's a very important holiday.
It is a very important holiday and I'm not saying we shouldn't celebrate it. I'm just saying that I don't know if we should, if they're paying for that holiday. But at Christmas Eve and Veterans Day.
Seven other cities that I called, so to have their office closed on Martin Luther King Junior Day, most schools, banks, post office. It's a national holiday.
And traditionally, much of the holidays that we have, the paid holidays are trade off. They're different than other municipalities. I don't know, many other municipalities that has Good Friday as a paid holiday. And probably very few municipalities that automatically give employees the day after Thanksgiving as a paid holiday. Thanksgiving for sure. Uh, the city of Craig's, the, the holidays listed in the, uh, the current list include Good Friday and, uh, the day after Thanksgiving. So, partly, some of those holidays are trade off. I know, my wife works for the state and there's about three holidays a year that if I had to spend a day with her, I'd have to take the day off. Or if she wants to spend the day with me on the ones that aren't state holidays, she takes the day off. So, there's, there's, it's, it's not all necessarily all of these holidays, but in some cases it's kind of a trade off. But, you know, we take the day after Thanksgiving off, but traditionally, there's some day that we don't. But, anyway, I'm, I'm all for giving staff time off when we can. So.
Yeah, I, um, I would like to echo what Brian said. I, I have my notes here. Good Friday is an unusual day for most municipalities. I, I don't have a problem with adding the football day, but I could also see balancing that out a little bit with any change to the policy on Good Friday.
I agree.
See lots of heads down, it seems quiet. So, I would propose that we bring a resolution to council on the January sixteenth. Council meeting, maybe the paid holiday section. And, and I would suggest that we include Veterans Day, Martin Luther King Day and half day on Christmas Eve as adding to our list of holidays and removing Good Friday and as a, as a partial balance. And the council, of course, can still debate those individual days and make changes to the resolution prior to adopting.
Can I just say one thing from an employee perspective? The Good Friday isn't Thanksgiving and the Friday, I mean, it gives you a four day weekend. And I think if that goes away.
Not Thanksgiving.
Good Friday is in March.
Good Friday is in Friday before Easter.
Before Easter.
Talking about Black Friday.
I, I think it's a, I think it's a showstopper to talk about the day after.
Yeah. And then on that note too, the, the Christmas Eve, um, because I'm, you know, police department, I can't just send my employees home at half a day. So, the poor ones, like this year, um, you know, I was directed to let staff work half a day. Well, I, I can't forward my phones to the troopers because they're not gonna take them. So, this way, if that was the city policy, those people working would actually get holiday days.
That's what I was gonna ask. They should get time to get holiday days. Yes. 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 We'd budget that in. We'd get a policy for budget. That's, that's.
If we do this, when would this come into play? Because there are some of us that travel to Catch a Can on three day weekend. So, whether or not to pay for my March ticket or not, it's good to know ahead of time.
A resolution that only requires one of the, by city council, so if the council chooses to, like, that's a resolution. To this effect, it would be, it would be effective January seventeenth. Okay. We will draft some language into the practice council for consideration for the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to general funds for jail operations expenses.
Move to appropriate power lines and infrastructure funding. We see that we need to zero fund to fund the replacement of the unit system of the police department. Go for the discussion. This time.
Yes. Yes. It's a long time of year to start worrying about how, how heat, so hopefully it is.
Yeah, I mean, all the inmates have got triple the blankets right now. If we have the heat too high up, it causes extra problems. So, it's kind of trying to find that happy medium to where it'll run and give some heat versus not run and have no.
Yeah, I'm, I'm there. My, my house, well, I got these zone valves that are stuck on and then they decide to turn off. And guessing a mechanical will not work on residential, they only work on commercials. So, I don't really know, but I understand. Any more discussion? Hold on, hold on.
James, Charlie?
Yep.
Sean, Tom?
Yes.
Sean, Penny?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
All right. Well, yes. Thank you. We can move on to alcohol sales tax on election days.
Um, if I could add one thing, I was just advising this yesterday, I didn't think, to even think about it, but the city of Coop does have ordinance in place that, uh, no sale of alcohol on any days where there's elections. Um, and according to their police chief, they plan to keep them at a place there and not going to, um, change it. So, even though, uh, under state law, you now may sell alcohol on election days, Coop does not intend to change their state ordinance.
I also want to second Chief Eli. I would prefer to stay closed on election day because alcohol gets involved or, you know, oh, let me buy a couple of drinks, go vote for this and that, you know? I just would prefer it to just stay how it's been. People are used to it. I, I would like people to have a clear head as well as they can, make time to vote.
Well, I'm happy they repealed it and I'm actually for it, not that I, I think these times we need to direct when we vote, not literally. Vote sober.
Well, the, the way. The way the law is rich right now, it's only while the polls are open. So, technically, um, once the poll is closed, usually that's, I think, eight o'clock.
Yeah.
You could open up your bar, um, liquor stores if you wanted to, if you could go drink.
Usually elections land on like Tuesday, so I'll go out drinking.
I'd like your meat burning.
I, I see you. You sit down in your front yard and drink.
Yeah, right.
Me and your office.
Yeah. So, I mean, as it stands right now, because the city of Craig doesn't have any ordinance or anything, technically, if the A C store wanted to sell, I mean, if there was a voting tomorrow, um, they could legally sell, you know, unless we enact some sort of state ordinance.
Would council like to see a draft, or to see an ordinance, um, presented for discussion and potential adoption at the next council meeting? Or, this, it might be the meeting after. I'm sure that we've probably got to figure out language to adopt, but the next couple of meetings, would council like to see a ordinance?
Well, if the city acted that, actually has ordinance, uh, saying that they will be open on election day.
But now they don't need that, right?
Now they don't need it, so they're just gonna keep it placed.
We can prepare it to council and further discussion about what we have to make.
Do I have a question? So, does, does state said sales, I wasn't aware of any of this. If the state says that you can't sell alcohol, they used to say that, now they repealed that?
Yes. Took about two and a half three years and repealed it. Now, basically, the law that was in place for thirty-five, forty years now is just gone.
So, if states don't sell alcohol on election day.
In, in many municipalities, probably most municipalities, don't have municipal code that says the same thing. So, like Craig, relying on the state law as to how we approach alcohol on election days. But now with a lot of, um, sun setting, being repealed, um, municipalities are gonna be a bigger choice whether or not they want to adopt something.
I don't know, I just, I don't think it's a huge issue. To, to me, it's not a big issue. I'm, I'm not concerned about it. If something popped up in a couple of years and it became an issue, then it would be considered a problem. I think it's a minimal concern and a little bit of an invasion of people's rights.
Have we had problems on election day?
No, um, other than getting.
Because we, they were all closed, so we didn't.
Well, there's one liquor establishment that bitches every year want to go in and come, you cannot be open. Close down or I take your license off the wall. So, and it's on.
Okay.
Not. I'm going in there whether you like it or not.
But there have not been a lot of problems in the past, but until this year, the state law applied. And so, this is the first year where that state law has not applied. And I, I don't.
No, but the most likely guarantee is, um, this year, as soon as there's an election day and they're aware of the law changes, they will be open. Because they're, they're the one that always gives the pushback.
Well, we get about three hundred voters out of a population of a thousand. I wonder if we had more drunk voters, if we get more voters.
Might get four or five hundred coming.
I really think this discussion is going a little bit wide.
Yeah, no, I'm a, I, I, I'll do whatever the council would like if you want.
Well, now, it was, if it was on the books for thirty-five years, it would have been enforced until the last couple of years, correct?
No, it's always been enforced.
Here in Craig?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. No, no. Yep.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, there's only one entity that ever get pushed back and that was the most, nobody else ever did.
And it's not saying that you can't drink on election day, you can't be drunk on election day, it's just saying that the stores and bars can't provide a drink election time.
What a cold. That, to me, you know, it's, you know, I want a beer. I got a beer home. I mean, it's not like I'm gonna be destitute on election day.
A lot of people don't know it's election day until they go to buy alcohol and it's closed. And then they're like, oh, I should go vote.
Kill you.
Most council want to continue the discussion. Like I say, the easiest approach maybe for us, find some language, put an ordinance together. And the council certainly can clearly want to improve for a secondary reason, if they're consensus that, um, we don't need the law in place.
Yep.
That's what we do. All right. Thanks, county council. Moving on to council comments.
Mr. Mayor, at some point in time in one of, because this has bothered me for years and years and years and years, this parking space thing.
Yes.
You know, we haven't enforced it. I mean, you look at how many businesses with zero parking? I mean, this is holding up the daycare. We've been screaming daycare for how long? This one here really got my goat. Progress was being held out by parking spaces. Come on, let's get real. So, I, at some point in time, I would just like to discuss it and just, so we can clear the air that we're all on the same page. I'm sure it's gonna come up again.
Absolutely. And I see that, um, with a lot of businesses come from the town. And here, it's always parking. I believe we have the opportunity to change ordinance on the parking. It's a more complicated process than normal ordinance because Title eighteen changes start with the planning commission, not the city council. And so, the city council will have to, um, propose a change or propose changes and take public testimony on those changes. And ultimately, um, if the planning commission feels the changes are necessary, forward those changes to the council for discussion. So, that's the first place that under the normal process, the council would participate in the discussion. I will say that we have fairly aggressively, um, enforced the parking standards, whether they're correct or not correct. Have consistently enforced the parking standards for, um, easily the last twenty years. It's the most talked about issue by the planning commission. And even when the planning commission makes an exception to the required number of parking spaces, it's always had the result of a long discussion. And now, it's the same with this case, only it was more complicated because the applicant for the cannery property rezone, um, was asked to show parking spaces before the first planning commission meeting would approach and chose not to show any parking spaces. And was given a list of options for providing parking, um, right after that meeting. And eventually came in with a new site plan and, uh, prepared to have a discussion with the planning commission. And the planning commission exercised their judgment, uh, as they are allowed to encode regarding the number of parking spaces. And as soon as they had information in front of them, uh, that they were comfortable with, they approved the thirty-three parking spaces.
Same with the daycare?
Very similar with the daycare. The daycare came in and we were told, the applicant, prior to the planning commission meeting, that they were about nine spaces short.
That meeting was also canceled because of the agenda being postponed.
But, so it was more time for the applicant to fix it, right, before the planning commission saw it. But the applicant was told when the application came in that this was not likely to pass the planning commission's muster, which the, the planning commission postponed the decision because there was no, um, the, the parking spaces didn't meet the code requirement and the applicant had not proposed any alternate solution. When the applicant came in the second time to the planning commission, uh, the applicant had taken up one of the solutions proposed by myself and the planning commission, which was to, um, the, the planning commission is allowed to permit parking spaces in shared parking. And the code says that shared parking has to be within three hundred feet, that they have to have permission to use that shared parking. And in this case, we also wanted to make sure that they weren't taking required parking from the senior center in order to meet the parking needs for the childcare center. But when the drawing came in, uh, realigning the building and realigning the parking spaces on the property and showed seven or eight new parking spaces on the other side of the road, uh, the planning commission, I think it took them five minutes to approve it. There, there was no pushback, no, no, but it was being picked on. There, there was no pushback, no, no, but it was being picked on different than other people. I'll be the first to say that over the past twenty years, there had been traditional use permits or, or other processes where parking, um, where the parking code hasn't been met, right? Um, and the planning commission takes those very seriously. And even if the applicant can't meet the parking condition, the parking requirement, if there are one of the alternate methods that the applicant wants to talk about, the planning commission looks at what can and can't be done. We've got streets like Ninth Street that were platted a hundred years ago. And, you know, the road has never been given any more room or the lots have not been given any more room. So every property on Ninth Street is a hassle. And that's one of the only places in town that we allow on-street parking and sharing parking in the harbor parking lots because there are public parking spaces within three hundred feet of some businesses down there. Uh, Front Street is the same way, right? We've got, uh, there's nothing we can do with the dockside lot, ever. There's no way to have a, a commercial building on that property and for it to provide any parking spaces, right? So we allow on-street parking on Front Street and they are well within three hundred feet of a public parking lot down in front of what was Redans. But I will tell you that parking has probably been the number one discussion issue for every permit that has come to the planning commission in the past twenty years. And that's why I kind of suggested, I mean, this town would consist of four blocks back in the day and perhaps those fan businesses and so on and so forth. Parking's always gonna be an issue and we're never gonna be able to give up, make a parking lot. And if we're not built next to us, we're gonna have to do with what we already have, so. We're accountable without policy, we follow the policy of the city and so is the planning commission. If there's something we can do to, um, assist with, uh, partake of, um, parking. We try to do that when we can, but the flip side is, is you walk around town and you see these lots that were platted eighty or a hundred years ago, right? I mean, the original townsite class for Craig was platted in nineteen twenty-two. And so you walk around and you see all of these problems, the current parking requirement, and I wasn't here when it developed, right? But when it was developed, um, the most likely answer as to why they come up with the numbers, which may or may not be perfect, but it was because we have eighty years of problems. And we want to solve whatever we can moving forward, but some we're not gonna be able to solve. And others are gonna be difficult choices or having to look at alternative ways to meet the requirements. But again, I'll say, I mean, staff of the planning commission for most of the past twenty years, every, every permit that comes in, parking is a discussion, right? And parking discussion is generally, how do we avoid creating new problems, right? How do we require the parking in a way that allows other development or prevents this, whatever it is, whether it's a residential property or a commercial one, from negatively impacting all the neighbors? While still keeping in mind, somebody buys a lot, the option to, to being strict on the parking requirement for lots that don't have parking is to now sell that property or they don't have any right to use their property, right? If Docside burned down tomorrow and, or some business, right, and they came in and, and needed a permit to rebuild and we looked at them and said, well, you can't provide five parking spaces so you can't rebuild. Now, that would be taking away any right to use the property. Now, do we wanna solve the parking problem? Yes. Is it always possible? Not at all. But should we try to solve it in cases where it is solvable? The planning commission's answer would be yes.
How does that determine how many parking spaces are needed?
There's a formula entitled eighteen fourteen that starts with the type of use, right? So a general use, for example, requires one parking space for every four hundred gross area of building footprint plus one, one parking space for each projected employee, right? And so that's the formula that is used for the CTA's rezoning application. And the number that calculates out to is fifty-five. And I'm not gonna.
Churches have such big parking lots and swimming pools.
In churches, it's based on either the coroner marshal's stated occupancy or one parking space for each twenty five, for each chair or each twenty-five inches of, of seating in that sanctuary. There's a whole list of uses and some of them are based on square footage, some of them are based on, on something else. But the form, the formula comes out of Title eighteen fourteen. And it's not me that chooses the number, it's not the planning commission that chooses the number, it's not the planner that chooses the number, right? That, that number comes straight out of the municipal code. Well, I think that the planning commission for resolving the two issues and starting to move forward on, that's huge. You know, the, the learning center day cares much more. I, I think that the planning commission did a great job resolving it. And as I've explained, really, the biggest reason for the delays was the applicant was not willing to. When the applicant first brought the rezoning in with zero parking spots shunned, I told them that day that it was not likely to be approved by the planning commission because there were no parking spaces shunned. And the answer that I got that day was, I just wanted to go to the planning commission like this. And no surprise to me, the planning commission said, there's no parking shown on here, we can't approve this. And rather than disapprove it, they said, fill in this information and bring it back to us at the next meeting. And when the information was filled in and we came back to the planning commission at the next meeting, the planning commission approved both of those applications at the next meeting, but it was heard. So, I mean, I'm sorry, it's a little bit of the soapbox. But, but I just wanna.
What's nice to hear?
Confirm to the county council that this is not, not me or planner or the planning commission holding up any project, right? I mean, obviously the planning commission was flexible in determining a reasonable number of required parking spaces. But it's a long way from some, some applicant telling me, zero is the number and I'm not gonna change that. That it's reasonable for the planning commission to say, we, we can't approve this, right? There's, there's not enough information.
Brian, is that something that we could have in writing, like that day you would have sent a letter to any business, not just the CTA, but any business or any person that was filling that out and, you know, saying, you know, that more information is needed, you know, um?
I don't know that we need to put it in writing, we, we certainly have the planner send letters out when those occasions come up. The problem that we have is that ultimately we go through decisions by the planning commission. And so we can make a recommendation, but we're not in any position to tell an applicant how to change their application, right? Are we able to accept their application if they don't have like a square footage or something on their application? Normally that's, if that's maybe, you know, we would have square footage or, you know, no parking on it, it would be, you know, so that was, you know, process where it's like, please go us out. And we do, uh, staff does a review of the applications and tries to point out potential flaws to the applicant at the time and give them an opportunity to remedy those flaws before it goes to the planning commission. We do that routinely. We don't send a letter necessarily in every case.
An email.
I did, I did send an email for the daycare center and that was the information that had been received. And they decided within the time period that I am given to provide documentation to my planning commission, um, that they wanted to take their agenda items off the agenda. That was why that agenda was put forward.
Anyway, I, I hope that fills in some of the gaps, um, and I'm sorry if it made it to the soapbox, but another question, if you're gonna drop that one. If we're moving with that idea a couple of.
Yes, please.
Okay.
One is, your rural schools does not, uh, pass continuing resolution. That means that several hundred thousand dollars a year, tentatively, is not coming our way anymore for schools. That's a huge, um, issue for us. Um, there are senators on both sides of the aisle, um, that have strong interest in this, both the public and Democratic senators. They said they're gonna, um, they'd go with this again, but we may potentially be looking at the, you know, the end of this program. That's a big issue for us. There's something to keep in mind, a financial deal. A couple of these I should bring up when, you know, Brian was talking. I am interested in attending Southeast Conference in September, excuse me, in February. Um, I talked to Rebecca Hinchman this week about the issue of our, our roads on the island not being striped. And, uh, and I also talked to another individual that's knowledgeable with, uh, state DOT. Both of them told me that the director of Southeast DOT, her name is Kristin Groynes, is a really good guy and that we should direct our concern about that. And I would like to ask that the city of Craig just make it known to him that this did not happen, it's an extreme, uh, safety issue. And we can also mention that the road between Coak and Control Lake is literally falling apart now. I called this a couple of years ago and it's literally happening. Um, another one that I'd like to just bring up is, um, the resolution and the recognition of, uh, Tim O'Connor, it's very good. I also believe that the letter that Martha Woods wrote in September, which she suggested that there's other people that also are deserving. I told her, I thought she had some good suggestions in there. Um, you know, I don't know, maybe we can ask our EMTs or our fire department to make suggestions on how to recognize appropriate, people that, you know, appropriately we shouldn't be recognizing long-term. Figure some way to do this, cause I, I'm not gonna say names, but I think we can all sit here and look and send us close to a handful of people, we can do this for them. Um, and the last thing I wanna bring up, we talked all kinds of policy stuff here and things we'd like to see, you know, addressed or discussed further. I would like to ask that, uh, we look at our conflict of interest guidelines for the council and see if we can provide a little more clarity and, uh, substance to that. And that, that can go around over, you know, a couple of months or something, but just kind of see where we, uh, where we are in comparison to other communities and, and if there's ways we can strengthen that. That's about it.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, we, it's, you know, a letter about the SRS payments, um, they, uh, a week or so ago.
Yeah.
Uh, to our, our representatives when we knew it was going through the house, but I didn't realize it, they thought it was gonna pass at that point in time.
Well, the problem is, is that the SRS program is contained in some appropriations bills. And so, uh, by Congress relying on continuing resolution, they haven't asked the program, they just. Funding, the, well, the bill hasn't reached that floor, right? The bill that it's in likely hasn't reached the floor, uh, for a vote because the, the negotiations in the House as to how to keep the federal government going for some period of time is by continuing resolution. And I think that expires in March. And so Congress will work diligently, I'm sure, um, to pass appropriations bills. And one of those is likely to contain SRS. So we did send a letter to senators, to, uh, Congressman Page, uh, for, for his support. It is already passed the Senate, uh, but not the House. And, um, and I've been told in discussions, SRS is always a subject that, um, I've heard about for Senator Raffowski's staff particularly. And up to now have been told that the SRS program itself is strongly supported. But I think where it failed at the moment was that it was not included in a continuing resolution. So we'll continue to follow up and it does have a big impact. There is one occasion in twenty sixteen, the program was not reauthorized and so we missed a year of payment. And then the, the program was authorized for the next year. So if it doesn't make a reauthorization this year, we'll, we'll full court request to have the program re, to support reauthorization of the program next year. All right, do you have another comment?
I, I have a comment. Um, I still am very concerned about the volunteers and the process of what, Gretchen, how, or anybody, um, how they approve or deny or what the process is. And I would like to go into exactly the session at the next council meeting about that.
Yes, and I did have a, a certain policy that people do have to just talk about.
I'm concerned. So.
Okay, all the papers?
No, that's just happened for somebody, we knew somebody high enough in the food chain that wanted to get a change. So the other stuff has like the APD's, they'll, they'll.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That whole law change became, cause one person, somebody high enough on the food chain, and it didn't want.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah. Or, you know, St. Nick, I would rather drive my, my side-by-side to St. Nick than my.
But, and for me, I, I'm, uh, paid.
So I, I get those, but I didn't. I was curious, I don't know who knows, like, are you still over twenty-one?
Well, it depends on. Yeah, but, yes, yes, but, but if you're sixteen and you're twenty-one, if I use car, four years, you're not over twenty-one. What we have.
He is over twenty-one. He's, uh, working out in a while.
And so.
Even if somebody is thirty years old and wants to date a sixteen-year-old in the state of Alaska.
No, it's not, no, it's not. It's four years. If you're a teenager, it's four years. I, I look up the law.
You gotta look at the, the, the certain subsections because legal consent in the state of Alaska is sixty. The only way that the four-year gap comes into play is if there's a position of authority, say like a police officer or a teacher or a council member, um, and you use your office to get some sort of.
Quit proto, that, and we can, we can revisit the, the law and look at it based on RJ's.
Right.
And that, that's the discussion from the.
I'll clearly unroll all the way down to our local prosecutor, cause we did. A handful of cases, um, every year is where this comes into play.
That's what I really, I said, basically if you're sixteen years old, you can't have sex with anybody who's younger than thirteen. And if you're a teenager, you can't have sex with anybody who's four or four years older than you in Alaska's state law. So if you're eighteen, they could be twenty, twenty-one, almost twenty-two. But if you're sixteen, they can't be, you know, you can't have, you can't be more than.